Good evening. Our prayer and pledge will be by Councilmember Shane McFarlane. Mr. McFarlane?
I'd feel bow your heads, please. Father, we thank you for this day and the chance that we have to come to represent the residents of this city. I pray that the decisions we make will be those that will be guided and directed by you. I pray as we discuss things that will affect our community tonight, that we keep in mind that our service is to your glory and your honor. We thank you for what you're doing for us and for loving us. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council, February 28, 2013. We have a number of visitors with us tonight. We always welcome visitors and appreciate your attendance and being here. We always welcome anyone to come to our meetings and have a good time with us while we're here having a meeting. But we do have Jared Barrett and Dr. Andy Brown here from our City School Board, and I believe that's Aaron Holliday from our County School Board is here. We welcome you and Dr. Linda Gilbert and Gary Anderson from the staff of our City School Board. So we welcome you and glad all of you are here, and we hope to keep our meeting relatively short. And I see Ms. Mary Wade, who is the Chair of our City School Board, snuck in and sits on the back row. Must be back row Baptist over there. But Mary, we're glad you're here tonight, too. Thank you. And all our other visitors and guests, if I've missed any elected officials, I apologize, but we're really happy that all of you are here. Councilmembers, you have before you your consent agenda. If there's any questions regarding the consent agenda, now would be a good time to bring those up. And if there are no questions, then I certainly would appreciate a motion to accept the consent agenda as it's been presented.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarlane?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
This time we'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Memorial Boulevard north of Cedar View Drive to Highway Commercial, CH District.
So moved.
Second. Motion and second. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarlane?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
This time we'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Memorial Boulevard north of Cedar View Drive to Highway Commercial, CH District.
So moved.
Second. Motion and second. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarlane?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
This time we'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance to amend Appendix A zoning, Section 24 pertaining to planned signage overlay, PS District.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarlane?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Planning Commission to schedule public hearings to consider annexation requests for approximately 3.6 acres and zoning requests for approximately 3.2 acres to Highway Commercial, CH District simultaneous with annexation along Memorial Boulevard north of West Thompson Lane, also outside the city sewer service for property located at northeast corner of the intersection of Epsom Hill Road and Forbus Drive at the Buchanan interchange with I-24 across Forbus Drive from the Loves Country Truck Stop, and to schedule a public hearing to consider a PUD amendment request for approximately 18 acres along Swan Home Drive consisting of parcel L of the Victory Station PUD. Ms. Ely, welcome.
Thank you, sir. And we again, councilmembers, the first item is to consider, is for you to schedule a public hearing for two items for the same property for the matter of its annexation and for the matter of its zoning to CH simultaneous with annexation. The property, the Planning Commission held a public hearing February 6 of this year and recommended annexing approximately 3.6 acres located along Memorial Boulevard north of West Thompson Lane. At that same meeting, the Planning Commission also recommended zoning the property CH simultaneous with its annexation. And the vote was unanimous to recommend the zoning and annexation, and you should schedule that item for a public hearing. I believe you take these one at a time, so...
Ms. McCannan?
April 4 is the suggested date, Mayor.
April 4. Councilmembers, does that meet with your approval? If it does, is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. McFarlane.
Second.
Mr. Gilli? Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarlane?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Ms. Ely?
The next item is to consider serving property located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Epsom Hill Road and Forbus Drive at the Buchanan interchange with Interstate 24 across from Forbus Drive, which is across from the Loves Country Truck Stop, as an outside-the-city sewer customer. The owner requested annexation or service as an outside-the-city sewer customer. This property is well outside of the city's urban growth boundary, and it's also not contiguous with current city limits, so annexation did not seem to, is not the right option for this property. The Planning Commission did recommend that it be served as an outside-the-city sewer customer. The owner of the property has submitted a site plan for the development of a small commercial center, which would include a restaurant and two small suites. Sanitary sewer is available to the property. It's located to the west across Forbus Drive, and other properties in the area have previously been approved as outside-the-city sewer customers. The county's on this property for commercial and industrial uses, and it appears the property would be zoned CH or treated as if it were zoned CH or inside the city. During its meeting on February 6, the Planning Commission considered this matter and approved it for service as an outside-the-city sewer customer. Any plans for this property would require both the Planning Commission's approval of the site plan in the city of Murfreesboro and the Planning Commission's approval of the site plans for Leatherford County. The Planning Commission did study the matter and approved it to be served as an outside-the-city sewer customer, and the city council should consider this item and then take action, make a decision on that matter.
And where is the sewer line located? Is it the end of Forbus, or is it farther out, or where?
It's, this property is directly across from Forbus, so it is at the property on the corner of Forbus.
All right. Any questions from Ms. Ely regarding this outside-the-city sewer service request? If there are no questions, is there a motion?
In this, Ms. McCannan, if we choose to serve as an outside-city customer, does not require a further public hearing from us?
That's correct.
This is just approved at this point?
This would be definitive action, yes, sir.
I would move for approval, then.
Thank you. Mr. Gilli, Mr. Washington, please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarlane?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Continue.
Thank you. The last item I have for you this evening is to consider, is for you to schedule a public hearing for a zoning change request. During the regular meeting on February 6, the Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing to study amending the PUD zone for property located along Swan Home Drive and is identified as parcel L in the program book for Victory Station Plan Unit District. Gross Builders is the applicant for this property. After the public hearing, the Planning Commission discussed the application and then deferred action on the item to allow the planning staff to study the matter of the extension of Roxburg Court and to return to the Planning Commission with additional information. During the meeting on February 20, the Planning Commission discussed the matter further and then took action to recommend approval with the extension of Roxburg Court to remain as a part of the plan. This decision was made unanimously by the Planning Commission, and the item before you this evening for you to schedule a public hearing for this PUD zoning amendment.
Ms. McCannan?
Mayor, I would suggest this be scheduled for April 4 as well.
April 4. Councilmembers, does that meet with your wishes? If so, is there a motion?
Move is that the hearing, public hearing for April 4. Second motion.
Thank you. A motion and second. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarlane?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Ely. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the city manager with regards to a proposed elementary school site. Mr. Lyons?
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, and members of city council. It is our pleasure this evening to present to you a proposal to acquire 25 acres for a new elementary school in the western portion of our community. With your permission, Mayor, I'd like Dr. Gilbert to talk a little bit about the school board's work on this, as they've analyzed the student body and where we need school classrooms, and then I'll be glad to talk to you about the deal points of the contract, the funding, and the schedule.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. We're glad you're here, and I noticed a school board member, Nancy Rainier, came in and now joins the others, so we're outnumbered, I think, almost.
Well, they're an attractive bunch, I have to tell you.
Okay.
I wouldn't take 'em on.
Agreed.
If I could ask Mr. Anderson to come up, since he does have the numbers, but I want to thank the council, and particularly, I want to thank the leadership of Mr. Lyons and the various city departments in helping us identify a site. This has been going, an ongoing process for many, many weeks. As you know, the mission of Murfreesboro City Schools is to assure the academic and personal success of each child. In order to do that, it is critically important that we have a comfortable physical learning environment for children, so that is why we have come before you tonight. We are needing a school on the west side of town because that's where we are experiencing the most severe overcrowding. Our board members have been made aware of the discussions that we have had with Mr. Lyons and our pursuit of land, and they also have visited a prototype of the school that we are recommending, the design of the school we are recommending. And so on Tuesday night, they did take a vote and asked that it be submitted to council, that this be the site that's selected. I'm going to let Mr. Anderson give you the numbers that we have, but we are particularly overcrowded at Scales. You will remember that you were involved in some portables that we put there, and we are wanting to remove those portables as soon as the new school is built. There are four portables there that have, that were necessary for this school year. Cayson is also reaching its limit as far as the number of students, and we, as you know, have a lot of lots that are in that area of town, so we feel that it is mandatory that we come to you to ask for a new school site. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. Thank you. We currently have at Scales Elementary School 1,070 students, and we have four portables there. The school's capacity was originally built for 1,000, and with the portables, it can add another 100, 100 students, so we are over the capacity of the original school built. Cayson Lane currently has 917 students at the school. Already approved for lots in the Scales and Cayson Lane area are 689 lots already approved for construction. This plan has been on the capital improvement plan for the last four years, so this was part of the planned expansion of the schools over in that area. Our student growth experience at Scales has been tremendous. The school opened in 2005. By the year, school year 2008/9, just three years later, it had already grown to 948 students. We rezoned at that time and brought it down to 900 students, and it has grown since then up to the current figure of 1,070. In the last three years, we have experienced a growth rate of 6.3% average over the last three years at Scales. We're looking at next year and anticipate enrollment of 1,125 to 1,150. That's a 5.1 to a 7.5% growth. There is some variance there because of the new state laws that are coming about that we need to see how this all gonna shake out on our kindergarten enrollments. And Cayson Lane will experience a growth of between 2.5 to 3.6% for that school. So as you can see, the need is definitely on the west side of town. The property that is being presented this evening has a nice path for us up Veterans Parkway to get to the northern side of Highway 96, which is where the majority of these students would be coming from to the school to get it opened up. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you would have about any of the numbers or anything about that I presented.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Are there any questions from the council members? If not, you can continue on. There may be some other comments you have, Dr. Gilbert.
No, again, I'd just like to thank you for your support of the city schools. I think we've made phenomenal growth in the last couple of years with our academic standing and in our approach to the whole child. That would not be possible without our support of our school board and your support, so I'd like to thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Mr. Lyons?
Mayor, as we began to look for the school sites, Mr. Anderson came to us, he's just shared with you the information about the growth in the Scales School District, as well as the Cayson Lane Academy School growth. And we knew in selecting a school site, we needed to have some distance from existing schools. Putting schools very close together certainly can present some zoning challenges. Certainly, Rutherford County has done an outstanding job with its school system, and the Blackman Elementary School is in this part of our community as well. So as we began to look for sites, we were looking to get some separation from the existing elementary schools. We also know that while schools need to have excellent access via our arterials, we certainly learned a lesson in locating schools on an arterial like Thompson Lane with the Siegel schools. As we all know, schools peak at the same time rush hour peaks for people to get to work, so we take our arterials at, you know, 40 miles an hour or more, but have to reduce them down to 15 miles an hour during school time. So that was another factor, as they began to analyze, and we began to analyze the appropriate location for school. And then certainly, the presence of utilities is another factor as we began to look at the cost components. So the city school team, they're always a pleasure to work with, sat down with our city planners, our city engineer, the manager's office, to begin to try to weigh, and Mr. Richardson from the traffic department began to try to look to find where could we find something that could help us on all those criteria. And I'll certainly tell you, as we began to look at a number of sites, some of these sites had some things that looked really good, and there were parts of the sites that, you know, certainly would present a challenge and an obstacle, and so to find the exact perfect site was something we were shooting for, and I think the site we've selected here best meets our needs given all those challenges. So after reviewing a number of sites, after talking to multiple property owners, we selected a site that is owned by Swanson Development. It is generally south of Highway 96 and east of Veterans Parkway. This is a 110-acre parcel, and as we began to look at it with Johnson &amp; Bailey at the table as well, we determined there was a 25-acre portion of that track that backs up to overall creek that looked like it would serve as an excellent opportunity for the school site. You've got a map in your packet that'll show the location of that, and Mayor, if it's helpful, I'll be glad to put something up on the screen that may help give the public at home an opportunity to see it if city TV can switch over. This is just a GIS map showing that, you can see the number of school locations, and the parcel that was picked out was over here. Again, we tried to create some separation to the existing school sites, and see if I can do it this way. This is the parcel that was selected. The road that is along the left-hand side of the screen is Veterans Parkway, and it would be accessed by an improved Moreland Lane. In your packet, that's labeled Street A. That's what's in purple or magenta. The second street that would be constructed by the city would be Street B. It's in orange. That would be the street that runs along the frontage of the school. And then in order to provide a secondary access to the parcel, Mr. Swanson would construct the road in blue, which in your packet is labeled as Street C. When this was originally presented to the school board, the school board did ask questions about access points and asked if a secondary access point could be achieved. As I began to talk to you all individually, I heard that comment as well. So we sat down with Mr. Swanson, and he agreed to build at his cost Section C, or the road in blue there, so it would give us access from Veterans Parkway for students coming from the north that could use the road in blue. The students coming from the south could get to it via Moreland Lane with all of them there along Street B. Now, because Mr. Swanson has acreage that would be served by this infrastructure, that certainly is a benefit to him, as we began to negotiate, what we finalized was a situation where Mr. Swanson would donate the 25 acres for the school site. In exchange, the city would build Street A, Street B, water lines, the sewer lines and the electric, and the approximate cost of that is $1.5 million. So that is what we've got to propose to you this evening. I'd be happy to stop at this point and see if questions about how that part of it is structured, and I'd be glad to talk about funding and schedule, but I didn't want to get too far along in the conversation without giving you all an opportunity to ask questions.
Questions, Mr. Lyons?
I have a few questions.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons, since this recommendation came from our city school board, how active was the city school board in this selection process?
I've met with Dr. Gilbert, is the city school director. I'd like to maybe call upon her to talk about how she updated it, updated the school board.
As far as the school board being active in selection of site, you don't find that really, they are not involved with negotiations. It is more the director of schools that is directly involved with that. They were kept aware of our meetings with Mr. Lyons and also visited a site in Williamson County that actually is a prototype school for this. They were not involved with the negotiations. That's typical because they have to make the final recommendation for the land, and if they are involved in the negotiations ahead of time, then it just keeps it cleaner for them to not be involved with those negotiations.
So, excuse me, how many lots were looked at?
We started out looking, I think, at nine sites, I believe, and wound up with the final, I believe, with three, Mr. Lyons?
We talked to at least five different owners of real estate regarding their property and whether or not it would be a suitable site for a school. In some cases, what we heard was that property that we, was actually not available for sale. We heard feedback from another property owner that because of what they had already invested in their property, that their price per acre was going to be far beyond what anything that the city would be able to afford, and I trust his judgment on that based on what I knew. There was another parcel that was discussed that had challenges with sinkhole and drainage that would make that property very expensive to develop. And then there was another property where a counteroffer was made that was considerably more than what we've brought to you this evening. So we did vet several sites. We did talk to multiple property owners, and as I mentioned, trying to find that sweet spot of not being on an arterial but close to it, having utilities relatively close to it, and having some distance to city school sites led us to this, this location.
So the elimination process was just made by you and who else?
We did this with a group effort.
I think it was cooperative effort because I think it became a part, part of it was topography, and was a situation where we knew that there were sinkholes on one site, for example. Some of it, we did not want to go too far south because we would have been right in line with Scales and Cayson Lane, and what we're trying to do with this, we'll pull from the north, but we also wanted to leave enough room for Scales and Cayson Lane so that as, as lots developed south of 99, we could zone them into Scales and Cayson Lane. So part of it had to do with, with the topography of the land, part of it had to do, as he has indicated, with willingness to sell, and then part of it had to do with where it would be appropriate for us to have a site in line or actually out of line with the other two schools that are located there on that side of town.
I know I attended the school board meeting on Tuesday, and there appeared to be quite a bit of frustration on behalf of the school board members that they were given the plan and this information during the school board meeting and was asked to vote on it immediately at that meeting, and they had no prior, previous information about this. And so I guess one of my question, questions I have tonight is that we've built lots, lots of schools in the past, and we're gonna build a whole lot more schools in the future. That's inevitable because we're growing 3% to 4% a year. What policy or policies govern the selection process that makes when we are selecting schools, selecting lots and everything, a more objective than subjective process?
Well, I'm not sure I can answer that. As far as hearing real discontent from the school board, I've not heard that. What I have heard is, is they have been interested in where we were looking, and they were certainly aware that it was on the west side of town. We had informed them that we were looking at a final three sites. They were aware of the timeline we were under, and as far as I can determine, they've been very supportive of this. I think where the subjectivity would come in is if you have someone who is involved with negotiations that also has to make a decision about the final decision, and so that, that was not the case here. I did consult with legal about the involvement of the school board as far as meeting with Mr. Lyons as far as negotiations, and we were recommended correctly, I think, when I look at what others, when other school systems do, that they should not be involved because that way they could be objected with the final site.
Ms. Gels, if I could ask one question here, just to follow up on a comment that both of those, both of our speakers have made. Dr. Gilbert and Rob, both of y'all have commented that one of the properties was eliminated because of sinkholes. Has any geotech study been done on this property? Do we know that this property does not have a sinkhole?
We have not done the geotech test in the contract.
Then how do we know that it's any different than the property we eliminated?
Our city planner, who wasn't able to be here this evening, had studied some of the maps and the soils maps, and that was not an indication that that was a problem on this, this piece of property.
If, I went and rode around on this property quite a bit yesterday afternoon. Would you be surprised to hear that there appears to be a sinkhole on this property?
We would, we need to do the geotech analysis.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not an engineer, and I wasn't studying it, but there appeared to me to be several situations that looked kind of iffy, and I have concerns with that.
And part of the balancing act in, you know, selecting land is, is to do full-blown geotech tests on multiple sites gets to be quite expensive. As we began to look at it, that did not seem to be a lot that had a prevalence of them. Was not told to me that it was gonna be an issue, and certainly if we got on the property and found significant geotech problems, that would cause us to be able to back up.
Okay.
And in this case, yeah, and in this case, I'm sorry.
Wait a minute. According to the report from the engineer, I guess, that we've gotten, that's coming up later, there's not going to be a geotech study done. There's no, it's marked off, the list of geotech survey shall be conducted to identify land conditions, and it's been marked off here, so we're not gonna do one. And I know with Rock Vale, I think, when they were doing the school, that they ran into this very same issue.
Mr. Griffith may be best able to answer that question. Mr. Smotherman?
Yes, sir. The geotechnical portion actually is not scheduled for the, for the road portion of the project, but the architect actually has got a proposal in for the site itself to do a geotechnical study. The contract that you have that I sent you this afternoon?
That's for the roads only?
Just for the road only.
Okay.
Well, we, in just listening to that, and I heard you say, Mr. Lyons, that that's gonna be quite expensive, and then I hear a saying a lot of...
What's gonna be expensive? I'm sorry.
The study. I mean, we're talking a lot about expenses.
Oh, the geotech?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and I'm hearing a lot about, in just reading this and just being on the council and attending a few school board meetings where we in a big rush to have this school opened by 2014, I think we may be looking at some safety issues possibly. So it sounds like we may be taking the cart before the horse in a way on some of these things.
Mr. Lyle Lynch is here from Johnson &amp; Bailey. I think he's probably done some work on the geotech... I think he's probably done some work on the geotech, and he may be a staff person. I miss Scales Harris that could help you with that.
Welcome.
Hello, good to be here. The geotechnical reports for a 25-acre site will run around $9,000 to $10,000. We currently have a proposal from a firm to do this particular site, and it's in Mr. Anderson's hands for, and I believe it was right under $9,000. It's typically too expensive if you're looking at nine sites to have the sites tested for multiple sites. And so, we're ready to go right away once y'all vote tonight on testing this particular site.
Mr. Gilli, did you have a question?
So, Mr. Lynch, is what you're saying is in paragraph three of the proposed contract lists under the due diligence components, the geotech study. What you're saying is you typically do that as part of the due diligence into the contract process after you've site selected versus multiple site evaluation?
That, that's up to the owner. Obviously, that's a limiting factor with that kind of cost, you know, almost $9,000. You can't do, you know, nine individual sites. So, you don't want to head down that avenue. No, my only concern is we definitely need one before we start the building itself.
And if I might add, in this particular situation, this site would be donated to the city. We'd acquire it free of charge. We know we've got to go through a process with the BZA for a special use permit. That's going to take at least 30 days. We also will need to go to the planning commission for site plan approval. That will take a couple of weeks. And I'm not sure how quickly the geotech report could be done, but I wouldn't be surprised if it, we could have the report within that timeframe.
We can have one in three weeks.
So, we would be able to have the geotech report should there be a sinkhole problem. We don't believe there is one, but we believe we can have that report in hand before we'd get too far down the road with road construction. That's where the city's expenditure money is going to occur. So, we'll know that before we would ever award the road contract.
Mr. Lyons, if we were, the sites we were looking at that were for purchase versus donation in exchange for, for infrastructure, so to speak, what were some of the average per acre land costs that were numbers that were coming about with some of those other sites?
Well, Mr. Swanson had given us a 2012 appraisal that, you know, indicated the value was at $55,000 per acre and change. I think it was 55,250. I believe the market was more in the 30,000 to 40,000 per acre range, but that's, I'm not qualified to render opinions on, on value. I could look at some comps and, and found one or two that were, were more in the $30,000 range a year or so ago. So, given the market's appreciating a little bit, I felt that it was probably more in keeping with where we were at.
Okay.
Obviously, more people are interested in property today than they were last year or the year before, the year before, the year before.
So, you know, if, if you used a figure of, of the 35,000 per acre for a donation of 25 acres, that's $875,000. Mr. Swanson would construct a road. Mr. Griffith estimates to be $700,000. So, he then gets to be at about the $1,005,000 investment in value. And the city's infrastructure would be a million five in value. So, we saw it as a collaborative effort where we can get an excellent school site, and the value brought to the table by both parties was in proportion and in relation and could result in a win-win.
What would be wrong in doing the study before we vote to go along with this site? What about if we vote to go along with the site and something's wrong with it?
We don't close.
We're back out of the deal.
That's why I'm saying, why even go through voting until we know this site is acceptable for the school? I mean, what's the rush?
We typically have had due diligence periods. That's essentially what would, would be occurring here. And we'd be doing things simultaneously, the BZA process, the geotech. We certainly, you know, if, if the site did not work out, there'd be $9,000 and some architect's time involved. But given the timetable to get this school open for the school year 2014, 2015, we certainly are on a pretty compressed schedule. So, we do need to do a little bit of multitasking. But again, given that this is not a traditional transaction where we're going to get the real estate and then hope it's okay, we'll have an opportunity, we believe, to do some analysis. And, and, you know, our indications are this site's going to, going to be an excellent school site. But we certainly want to have the data in hand before we would let that road contract.
Mr. Lyons, you mentioned the traffic flow going on Thompson Lane and, and what goes on with Segal School. And I know the Segal High School and stuff sits pretty far back off the road. It's not up next to the road. Will there be any interference with Medical Center, or not Medical Center, but Veterans Parkway? Will there be any interference with Veterans Parkway if this school is opened up there where you've proposed? Would there be any interference with the flow of traffic there, I guess? Because you've got two entrances and exits going out on two Veterans Parkway.
Yeah. And the suggestion that we got from the school board and you all as council members to have the multiple access points, certainly the staff agrees with that. That does help distribute the traffic. But that Street A and Street C do provide some separation off of Veterans Parkway. We know parents like to get to school a little bit ahead of the opening bell, so it does cause them to queue up. If they're going to queue up, they're going to queue up on those roads as opposed to Veterans Parkway. That's what we see with Segal Elementary and Segal Middle School. They've staggered their times to help alleviate some of that. But with those being directly on that arterial, it doesn't give you the separation that Street A and Street C will.
And I understand that they'll be used to stacking lanes, these roads that we're talking about constructing. But do, do we have any plans at all to interfere with the flow of the traffic on Veterans Parkway?
Well, a school's certainly going to drive traffic toward it, but Veterans Parkway is a road that's, you know, got substantial capacity right now. So, we believe, you know, the level of service is going to be acceptable. But when the school gets ready to start, we know a lot of folks show up there. But this would just be one school as opposed to, you know, the Blackman complex and the Segal complex have three schools each, which certainly creates additional traffic. So, we believe, you know, it's got enough separation off the road that it'll perform well.
With the, along that same line, if there were three points that accessed this school, there would be even less traffic that would be potentially coming from, rather than the two points, you'd be coming from three points. Just across the creek here from the school proposal, there's, well, well, across the creek is, there's a neighborhood and just count them on Google here roughly, and I don't know how up-to-date the Google maps was, but there's 150 homes across there. And I'm sure a lot of those kids in Kings Ridge will be attending school. I'm sure they'll be zoned here. But there's no access for them to come to the school without going out onto Franklin Road or 96 and going out to Veterans Parkway and coming back to the school. Around the river and through the woods, I guess, is, is how they're going to get to school. But how much study and how much potential and, and what, what is the possibility of having a bridge crossing that creek to allow access to that school through that neighborhood, giving you an access that would be very accessible to the fire station and emergency response people who would be coming from Memorial, no, from Frank, Franklin Road or 96 there? They're going to have to do the same aroundabout trip to get to the school. How much study and consideration has been given to that? And, and we've discussed it. I know the answer to the question. But, but, but I think it needs to be stated by you as to why we are not making that connection there.
Sure. I'd be glad to. And maybe to go back to kind of your opening comment, Mr. Smotherman, about access. More is always better when it comes to access. So, we certainly understand and agree and appreciate having more access points does help even better distribute the traffic. Kingdom Ridge was a planned unit development developed by Mr. Swanson. That planned unit development did not include a bridge across the creek. And, and, you know, the situation with the planned unit development, you know, some people have bought into that neighborhood and, and did not see a connection over to Veterans Parkway. However, that being the case, we certainly can see an opportunity for Street A, if it continued across the creek over to Kingdom Ridge. It does provide an access point to the east. I went out and drove it today. It was about two miles from, from one of the back corners to go up Conquest, to make a left on 96, to make a left on Veterans, and then head toward what would be Street C. It's about two miles. So, we would certainly see a benefit there. However, that bridge, the, the road that would be associated with connecting the bridge to the neighborhood and then the utilities is estimated to cost about $1.9 million. I asked Mr. Anderson this morning how many city school students were in that neighborhood right now. Now, I don't have the elementary school kids for the Blackman schools, which some of them may go to. But right now, we have 19 students living in Kingdom Ridge that are currently going to Scales that would, in all likelihood, be zoned for this school. So, that $1.9 million cost was, as we began to look at it, would have been great to have. But as I mentioned, I think as I began my presentation, none of these sites was perfect. And if there was a, a part about this site that was a little bit of a negative, it was the fact that the access point to the east was going to be $1.9 million. But given that most of the students, we believe, are going to come down the Highway 96 corridor or the Veterans Parkway corridor, that was part of the trade-off. So, we'd love to see the bridge. If you look in the contract, we did contemplate that as a possibility down the road. We wanted to leave open that opportunity down the road that if, from a performance standpoint, it does show up to be something that would be beneficial. Now, we've made accommodations where we may look at the situation and go back to Mr. Swanson and say, if you would consider amending your planned unit development, the city could, you know, consider participating in the bridge. But right now, we think we've got, you know, access sufficient from Veterans Parkway that will let the school perform, perform well. And so, we certainly understand and appreciate the idea and suggestion. We'd love to see it. It just got, that physical barrier of the creek is what tended to drive that cost up, Mr. Smotherman, so.
So, right now, we have one way in and one way out?
Well, with Mr. Swanson's addition of Street C, you, traffic could split to the north via Street C, turning right, coming out of the school. And if you were going south, you could turn left on Street B and head south that way. So, now we'd have two access points.
But has he consented to complete that street?
Yes, ma'am. On Street C, he committed to have that complete by July 1, 2014, which would be the opening of the school, the occupancy of the school.
And that will be written in the contract?
Yes, ma'am. That's in the contract. It's before you. He would fund Street C, and he would complete it to be timed with the opening of the school.
Rob, I know you mentioned a number there about the kids who go to Scales, 17 or something like that.
I believe it was 19, Mr. Smotherman.
19. The, do we know how many kids there are who are elementary kids who go to Blackman? Because actually, I think Blackman would probably be closer than Scales even.
Yeah. Yeah. I mentioned I did not have that, that number.
You do, you do not know that number. Because, I mean, I would assume that there's probably more kids than that going to Blackman because, I mean, it's just straight-up fortress there.
Yeah. And while, yeah, while we understand there may be some elementary school kid, kids in that neighborhood, you know, instead of being, you know, a quarter mile or a half mile commute, it was, you know, I clocked it in my car today at 2:00. Depending on where you were in the neighborhood, where I was at in the back corner, it was about a two-mile trip to get up and around. So, a little bit out of the way, but, you know, certainly accessible and-
Yeah. I don't think it's the distance. I think it's the fact that you have to go out onto Highway 96 and then onto Veterans Parkway, which are two fairly heavily-traveled roads. And there's not a light leaving Kings Ridge there to get out onto the road, I don't believe. So, it, you're forcing a lot of kids to cut across that traffic every morning to get where a bridge would completely eliminate that problem. And of course, I, I love, I love what you presented here as far as the location and everything, as long as it takes out, checks out through the geotech. But the, but, but that bridge, if it were there, this would almost be the perfect location. I mean, I mean, geographically, where it's located from the schools, I mean, it's a really nice place. It's beautiful back in there. It's between creek and a mountain, and it is a very pretty site. But the, you know, it would sure be nice if that bridge were there.
Any other questions or comments?
I would like to see the study done before we vote on the property.
Is that in the form of a motion?
I would like to make a motion. Yes, sir.
That we do the geotech on the site before we approve any contract?
Yes, sir.
All right. Is there a second to that motion?
I would second it.
All right. There's a motion and second. Any questions regarding the motion? Please call a roll.
Mr. Gilli?
No.
Ms. Scales Harris?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
No.
Mr. Smotherman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Washington?
No.
Mayor Brad?
No. All right. Any other questions, comments, or motions before we consider this recommendation to the city manager?
Mayor Abbott.
Mr. McFarland.
The main, I want to sort of qualify that in the construction of a site, it's very common to be able to get a site under contract, have your due diligence period, which it's, whether it's six months, sometime, not 30 days, 90 days, in some cases, six months. But, you know, you, in my opinion, you do your due diligence on the front end, and you hope everything's okay with the site while you're doing your testing, where they'll come in, they'll, they'll do core drilling to check the soil, to make sure that your foundation's okay. And then, you know, nine times out of 10, the site will be okay, and you proceed forward. So, I, I think whether it be this site or any other site that we would have had a recommendation, we would have had to do the geotech testing beforehand. Is that sort of standard or correct?
We've probably done it both ways in the past, where we, we do the geotech ahead of time, and there's been other times where we'll get it under contract and, you know, we can pull out of the contract if things do not come out to our satisfaction, which we'll have that ability here.
The thing I like about this site, and I'm in this area like most of several council members are every day, you know, at this point, Veterans Parkway is not a heavily-traffic site, traffic, traffic road, especially this portion. And I like that we're able to take a school site and put it in an area that is not heavily trafficked right now, that we are maybe looking at past choices, St. Andrews Drive and other areas where we are, you know, having a very major school site on a road that people are trying to get in and out of. The one concern that I do have, I think that we are going to have to look at Moreland Lane, that Moreland Lane right now is barely wide enough for two cars to pass through.
It's substandard. You can't get to between the hedges.
So, I think that's something that we're going to have to, to look at. But, but the other thing I think that we do need to be cognizant about, that we have a fire station right now that's not online, that's a mile and a half from this site. So, I mean, I would hope that this maybe would spur getting that station online when we have students there, that it may be something that, that we have that, that station ready to go now. So, and I think that's the distance, Mr. Lyons. It's a mile, mile and a half from, from this site. So, and plus, I think, you know, there, there are some educational opportunities being on overall creek and, and in this area that we don't, we don't presently have on other school sites. So, I, in this case, I, you know, I think it's a, from what I've seen in, I guess, the school board recommended with a unanimous vote, that it's a good site. The one thing that I do, to Mr. Smotherman, I think it would be great to have a bridge. But I probably could argue, if I'm a resident in that neighborhood, that I would, if I had bought there, not with a bridge going to be there, and then you have Rucker Lane connecting, and all of a sudden, you go from a, a minor street in a subdivision, that now you're about to make that a permanent pass-through through Rucker Lane, knowing that you're going to have just as many people who will use that street to get to Rucker Lane to Veterans Parkway who will not be going to that school. That's something I think I would want to see a study on that done before we made that decision to do that.
And I think it's a, well, I guess I'm looking at it from, from a standpoint, if I'm going to buy a house, I build a house, and I buy a lot, I'm going to get that lot tested before I go on and purchase it. Whereas, we're doing just the opposite here. We're buying this lot, and we haven't had it tested or anything, which to me does not make any sense. make any sense.
We're not buying anything.
I know it's being given, Mayor, but also, on the other hand, it's being given, but on the other hand, taxpayers are going to pay that 1. something million to get this infrastructure up. So, we are buying. And another thing, it was said unanimously voted, and I was at the school board meeting, yes, it was unanimously voted, but here again, some of the comments I was hearing, that they just received the information while they were sitting at the school board to vote on, just like, and I'm just, now, my son can tell you, I'm a stickler for details. Like, today, we're just getting this information less than five hours before council meeting. You know, I kind of like to do my homework, like to study things, and these are just questions that I have. You know, I just would not buy a lot unless I had it tested. But we're doing just the opposite with taxpayers' money. We're buying, we buying this lot because we're paying for this infrastructure without getting it tested. And we're talking about $9,000, and that's a drop in the bucket compared to what some of the things we spend things on. That's just my opinion.
Anything else? Any other questions or comments?
Mayor, just, just briefly, I want to say I deeply respect the, the position, Ms. Harris, that you've taken regarding that, and Mr. Smotherman with your second of her motion as well. But I also look at this, as Shane said, it's coming to us with a positive recommendation from the school board and the timeframe that they're on. And I kind of look at it like buying a house, putting a contract on it, knowing you're going to have an homeowner's inspection, a termite inspection, and all the things that go along with it, but you don't have those things done until you've got the contract on the property. And then, if those don't work out, the contract is never closed, and you're not, you're not buying it, you're not out of money. And in this situation, if those surveys and tests failed, then we wouldn't be putting that infrastructure in, and there's no taxpayer dollars other than that $9,000 being spent at that time. But the pro, pros of it is, is that you're allowing other site work to be done that, under the supposition that the geotech studies come back correctly, the school site is that much farther along and moving toward the, the completion date that our, our children needed to be, be in.
Right. But to Madeline's point is, we received this information four hours ago. I mean, it's not like, you know, I liken it to Obamacare. I, I mean, it would be nice if we could study it and read it a little more than, than the information that, the ton of information that we've been given in a very short period of time to swallow and, and make a decision on. As to the unanimous vote on the city council meeting, the difference between Shane and yourself and Madeline and myself is, we were at that school board meeting, and there was concerns expressed about the bridge and about the property. So, so even though it was voted on unanimously, yes, it was, but there were concerns expressed. So, it didn't come without concerns. And to Shane's point, as far as the traffic, I know we've, we've still got in the plan here, the potential of having a pedestrian bridge crossing the creek. And that pedestrian bridge would certainly be going from a piece of government property, which would, would be our school property, across onto what is now all residential property. And I can't imagine anybody being on the other side of the creek, wanting us to build a bridge with the students from the school cutting through their property and, and to access a road over there where they're either being picked up or dropped off or... I, I still think there's the potential of traffic coming into that if we build a bridge that's a pedestrian bridge. So, I, I mean, I still think that we're having people coming into that neighborhood even, and certainly, you're improving the value of property by having an elementary school adjacent or close by to the property. So, I mean, there, there is the beneficial gain of the property that is not developed over there, of it being close to a school without having to go out onto two major thoroughfares to get to it.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, I was there. I guess I'll make my little comments. I was there. I was familiar with the sites, Mr. Crumlin, Rob. Not all of them, but some of them, as we discussed, looking for sites, walked for a little, six, seven, eight, nine months. Shane made the point about Moreland Lane. Moreland Lane is, is substandard, and we may have to address Moreland Lane somewhere in the future. And you've got some other factors. That land out there is not going to always stay green either. And as soon as that school goes out there and this economy gets better, then you, then that's going to change the whole face of that Veterans Parkway. I personally did like this, this, this site better than the other ones I, I heard of. The other, you know, I didn't know the issues with them, but you're making a good point about the geo, about the, the studies and everything, but that's normally not done that way in construction. The power line runs right by it. It's not on here, but I guess the one they're going to use runs right by the site. So, there are pros and cons with both, when you're looking at any site. But, and, and they did get this thing, I had a little bit more advance, advanced than they did, but they did get this tonight of. But I hope and pray that they think this is a good site and, and the decisions made by the city manager as far as the bridge, which could be a possibility in the future. But I guarantee you, beyond that planning commission, you'll have just as many folks that don't want the traffic that do want the traffic. So, let's be realistic here. With that said, you need a motion?
I do.
That's it. I move to approve the recommendation.
I'll second his motion.
All right. You have a motion and a second. Any questions regarding the motion? If not, please call a roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Scales-Harris?
No.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
No.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Brad?
Aye.
At this time, thank you. We appreciate all the work and the cooperation of, of working together, and I know it was difficult and has come together fairly quickly. I think the schoolchildren in Murfreesboro will appreciate that. I appreciate all the questions from the council and the work that's been done up to this date, and we'll look forward to moving along and finding out whether the site's going to be acceptable and whether we can come together again and have a groundbreaking at some point and perhaps open up a new Murfreesboro City School. I appreciate all the school board members who are here. I think Mr. Campbell came in later on. Mr. Campbell, thank you for being here and for making your presence important to us. So, I appreciate all of that. Any other comments from the council? Mr. Gilli?
Mayor, just quickly, before some of the school board members leave, I never liked this opportunity as a, as a parent of two children in the city school system to thank you all for all that you do on behalf of my kids and to brag on my daughter. She was just admitted to the Central Magnet School and is currently a student at the Discovery School, and I thank the school board and the school administration for the wonderful education she has received at that, that school.
Very good. Thank you.
Like I said, that site's not out of the wind yet. That, that site has geothermal drilling that has to be done. That's, that's some stuff that has to happen.
And I think you all did do an excellent job, Dr. Gilbert and Rob and engineering staff, planning staff. You did a great job. We can agree to disagree. In the future, I would like to say, though, that when we go to look at another school site, which, you know, it seems far away, but the way we're growing, it'll be here before we know it, that we at least involve the school board chair in the mix, if not the whole school board, so, just so they can be kept in the loop. That's just something that, an observation.
And all...
Go ahead, Mr. Smotherman.
And also, I just want to make it clear to everyone that our, both Madeline's and my votes, no, was not against the schools. We certainly are 1,000% in support of our schools, our teachers, and the wonderful job that y'all do. And we, we've just got concerns with the piece of property that's been chosen, not anything to do with the schools and, and the process that, that, that we've got a concern with. And certainly, we hope that everything comes out well with it, and I'm sure it's going to be, it's a beautiful location for a school.
All right. Anything else before we go on? School board members, you're free to go or free to stay. I know you probably have other things to do, but we certainly appreciate you being here and your consideration of this site and recommendation. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the city attorney with regards to adoption of a social media guidelines as Section 6013 of the employee handbook. Ms. McKinnon?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council will recall that staff presented to you and you adopted a resolution dealing with social media. This employee handbook section is intended to fulfill the same goals with, in that resolution with more detail, to give guidance to staff, particularly department heads who would be authorizing social media sites to be developed using the city's name. Be, need to acknowledge the work that Adam Tucker and my staff did, working with Chris Lilly and other members of the city staff who are already on social media. We have a significant presence currently, and it is intended to support that and provide guidelines for its continued expansion.
Will other public entities, volunteers, civic, social organizations be able to post things on the city's website or social media?
No. The city's, the city's website is controlled by the city. We have a policy governing links to that so that we don't turn ourselves into what's known as a public forum, where if we let one entity put on any, another entity could say, you have to let me on. There's already been a Tennessee lawsuit about that. Our policy provides for links to entities that we already financially support. We have information and links there. But in terms of direct posting, no. Now, obviously, the website policy is within the purview of the council to change, but that is the reason why it is the way it is now, as there is a revamp that is being done by the IT department with consultant that we expect to enroll by the end of May. And that's not envisioned, to my knowledge, to have any change in that policy.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions regarding this adoption of social media guidelines? If not, what are your wishes regarding this recommendation?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Scales-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Brad?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for adoption a resolution declaring the city to be a hybrid entity under the Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act of 1996, better known as HIPAA, designating a HIPAA privacy officer and adopting a HIPAA privacy policy and procedure. Ms. McKinnon, you going to?
I will, Mayor.
Carry on? Thank you.
Yes. You know, it's sort of, you're a hybrid and you didn't know it. Well, now, we're making it official. The federal law requires certain, very detailed and appropriately so, provisions to protect personal health information. Personal health information, the city has determined of the type that is intended to be protected is related to our health plans. It does not relate to certain other functions that we conduct, say, the police get a report, and there's some medical information provided to them that may be in the report. We need to declare that we are a hybrid entity and specify that it's only our health plans that have the kind of information that is subject to this protection under the federal regulations. In my hypothetical example of medical information in a police report, it would be covered by a different state law provision, but it would not have the complexity of the HIPAA regulations. I sent the information to you in advance of the packet, partly due to its complexity. When you looked at the guidelines, you saw the kind of requirements that federal law says, in terms of the locked file cabinets, the closed doors, specifying by title that particular individuals, you will note that the city manager does not have access under these guidelines to this kind of information. So, it's very detailed, and it is important that we distinguish between what is covered by HIPAA and what is not. So, the purpose of this resolution is to have the council declare that we are hybrid and that some of our functions are covered by HIPAA, but only a limited number, that we will have a HIPAA officer, which it is proposed to be the Assistant Human Resources Director, and that we are adopting these policies and guidelines. And these also reflect a, a lot of staff work from HR and legal, again, Mr. Tucker, and administration. So, we bring them to you with a recommendation for adoption of the resolution, which will make the declaration appointment and policy adoption that I've described.
Ms. McKinnon, you mentioned the health insurance. Does it also apply to the health information obtained by virtue of worker compensation claims?
No, it does not. Workers' compensation, we have state law provisions that deal with confidentiality there. One of the things that is, you know, we, we have to be sensitive to, and the guidelines tries to reflect, that there may be health information that HR gets through the medical benefit that would not be accessible for workers' comp purposes. And, but there is no prohibition against the workers' comp information going to HR. It's sort, and that's, it's a one-way flow of direction.
If not, is there a motion?
No other questions. May I move for adoption of the resolution?
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Scales-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Brad?
Aye.
At this time, we'll consider for adoption a resolution requesting unclaimed balance of accounts remitted to the state treasurer under the Unclaimed Property Act. Ms. Wright?
Mayor, this is something we do annually. We are allowed to turn in our unclaimed property, property to the state, and once the amount of time has passed that is required by the state, we can ask for any funds not claimed to come back here. We do make the agreement that if someone needs to claim those funds through us, we will pay them out through us.
All right. Any questions regarding this resolution? Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Thank you.
It's now.
All right. You have a motion and a second to adopt this resolution. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Scales-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Brad?
Aye.
At this time, we have beer permit applications. Ms. Wright?
Mayor, I have several tonight. The first three are all pending their completion of building codes inspections. One is a convenience store at 1607 Middle Tennessee Boulevard. That is an ownership and name change. One is a grocery store at 3060 South Church Street. That is an ownership and name change. And the last one is another convenience store at 1630 Brable Pike. That is an ownership and name change. And then, we also have two special event permits. One is the Business Education Partnership Foundation for an event on March the 8th to be held at the Chamber. And the second one is for the Center of the Arts for an event to be held March 16th at the parking lot of Pinnacle Bank. All of the applications have met our requirements with the exception of those needing final building codes inspections, and I recommend approval.
All right. These meet requirements and are requested to be issued based on successful completion of the required building codes inspections. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. A motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Scales-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Brad?
Aye.
You have before you the statements to be considered for payment and any questions regarding any of the bills to be paid.
Move to approve the statements, Bill. Yeah, I do. Yeah.
Motion?
Mm-hmm.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Gilli, thank you. Motion and second to pay the bills. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Scales-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Brad?
Aye.
Regarding board and commission appointments, I would like to reappoint the members of the pension committee, which would be Mr. Michael Gower, Mr. Rob Lines, Mr. Charlie Myatt, Mr. Denny O'Donnell, Mr. Greg Sample, Ms. Wright, and Mr. Shane McFarland to, and I make that recommendation to you. I also have the recommendation of the Board of Electrical Examiners and a requested appointment of Mr. Michael... I make that recommendation to you. I also have the recommendation of the Board of Electrical Examiners and the requested appointment of Mr. Michael McCann, owner of Michael's Home LLC, to fill a vacant position, and also Nick Brown, a representative of Murfreesboro Electric Department, to fulfill the term of Mark Kimball, who has left the city's employment at Murfreesboro Electric.
He's a good guy.
So I make those recommendations to you, and I apologize, I did not hand you out the sheets. I will give you those. I'm sorry. Go ahead and admonish me for not giving them to you quick enough. I go ahead and accept the blame now. I apologize. Also, the recommendation for our cable TV commission is Mr. Robert C. Maxey. And I point out, and I was, brought this to attention several weeks ago at our last meeting, and Mr. Maxey has made an example of himself by registering to vote. So I appreciate him doing that, and I make those recommendations to you.
Mayor, I'd like to ask on the Michael McCain suggestion you made, he's not a city resident. Is there any issue at all with having nine city residents serving on city boards?
I'm not sure either one of these members are city residents. Ms. McKinnon, can you speak to that, please?
Yes, sir. It depends on the board. For some, we have a residency requirement. The Board of Electrical Examiners is not one where such a requirement exists.
Okay.
That's correct.
Is it more of an area of expertise that we're concerned about as opposed to-
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Good question. Any others?
I'll make a motion. I don't know if I can make a motion for myself to be on the pension committee. Can I do that?
No.
I'd be happy to remove myself from the pension committee.
You will not be able to duck that responsibility by declining to make a motion.
Nice try. Mr. McFarland, I accept your motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Brad?
Aye.
Other business to come before the council? Ms. McKinnon?
Thank you, Mayor. You have before you the recommendation for renewal of our police professional liability insurance policy at the same coverage limits with the same carriers we currently have for $9,000 a year less, and I recommend that you accept that recommendation.
Questions for Ms. McKinnon?
So in essence, this would be sort of a change order, since Mr. Griffith is going to be coming up in a minute, but it would be a change order for a less amount.
Well, we put it out for bid, so, so, so the analogy is there, but not literally.
Okay. Well, I move for, I move for approval.
Thank you. A motion is made. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Brad?
Aye.
Other business? Mr. Griffith, welcome.
Vice Mayor Brad, your counsel, I'm happy to report that I do not have a change order tonight, but I do have a contract for the design of the roads and utilities to serve the proposed West Elementary School. For the previously approved school site, we'd like to move forward with the design of nearly 2,700 linear feet of mostly new roads and their utility extensions. Staff has requested and received a proposal from Huddleston Steel to design the improvements to include both the roads and the utilities. Huddleston Steel proposes to perform the design at the, at the proposed billing rates with the total not to succeed, not to exceed, sorry, $99,000. The engineering contract will be funded by the 2012 TML loan for engineering and acquisition of this school site. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions for Mr. Griffith?
May I move, we approve the recommendation of the city engineer?
Second.
All right, you have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Brad?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Mr. Crumley?
Mayor and council, the city has the opportunity to refinance part of its existing debt of the water sewer fund and the Murfreesboro Airport. These loans were obtained several years ago at interest rates that are not favorable to what we can obtain on a current refinancing. Tonight, we're recommending to you an engagement letter with Public Financial Management that has served as the city's financial advisor on the last six or so bond issues the city has done, to serve in that role as financial advisor and lead us through this refinancing process. Their letter is subject to Legal Department's final review. We anticipate savings currently in water and sewer of somewhere in the neighborhood of $300,000 a year for the Murfreesboro Airport, about $30,000 a year. We highly recommend your approval of this.
All right. Questions for Mr. Crumley regarding this contract? Mr. Crumley, I appreciate you saving the taxpayers close to $330,000 and paying off our debt.
We haven't done it yet.
I think you're going in the right direction, though. Is that in the form of a motion, Mr. Smotherman? In the form of a motion.
Second.
All right, you have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Brad?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland, I understand you have a piece of business you'd like to bring to us.
Thank you. I've had many, many, many discussions with Mr. Lyons over the last month or so regarding the stormwater fund, and I know, we're talking to the, our Water and Sewer Board representative from the council, I'd like to make the request that we have a workshop as a council member to discuss the stormwater fund and invite the stormwater, excuse me, invite the Water and Sewer Board to attend that. And that way we can, instead of meeting individually back and forth, I think the best way to come up with some recommendations on the future of that is to do that as a council. So would like to request, I don't know if that needs to be in the form of a motion, but to have a work session maybe before the next council meeting or whatever we can do advertising-wise.
We need to give adequate public notice, and there wouldn't be enough time to do that before the next council meeting.
If you'd like, what we could do is pull the members of council and the Water and Sewer Board members to try to find some dates in the next couple of weeks, sooner rather than later, so we can get together and talk about that. Be glad to.
I would, I would like to maybe make the request that since we're going to get together on this as a council and Water and Sewer Board, that maybe anything that we look to do with that in the future, we sort of put on hold until we, as a council and Water